Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you and welcome to the February 2nd, 2016 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present with the exception of Councilor Henderson who is excused tonight. Under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, today is Groundhog's Day. And as Kit put this in, just what have trouble with it, Punxsutawney Phil did not see his shadow in his forecasting in early spring, that time will tell. Coffee with the cop event is tomorrow, Wednesday the 3rd, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Donut Dugout. This is a great opportunity to ask questions, voice concerns, and get to know the police department staff. The first cup of coffee is on the PD, and everyone who stops by will receive a free gunlock. City offices will be closed on Monday, February 15th for President's Day. The Post Falls Senior Center is now taking appointments for the AARP Free Tax Aid every Tuesday and Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Call the Senior Center at 773-9582 for appointments. There is no charge for this service. And the Park and Recreation Department is putting on a Valentine's Murder Mystery Party, tapas, and mocktails on September, February 13th, 6:00 to 9:30, age 21 and over. Space is limited, so call Parks and Recreation at 773-0539 to register. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict? Could you present the consent calendar, please?
Item A is minutes, January 19th, 2016, City Council Meeting. Item B is payables, January 12th through January 25th, 2016. Item C is Chase Road and Grange Avenue Annexation Agreement, File Number A-1504. Item D is North Place Planned Unit Development, Findings of Fact and Conclusions. Item E is North Place Subdivision, Findings of Fact and Conclusions. Item F is Local Professional Services Agreement with HMH LLC for Construction Engineering and Inspection for the Seltis Way to Mullen Bike Ped Trail Project. Item G is Local Professional Services Agreement with JUB Engineering Incorporated for Engineer of Record Services for the Seltis Way to Mullen Bike Ped Trail Project. And item H is New Beer and Wine On Premises Consumption License for Post Falls Brewing Company LLC at 112 North Spokane Street.
Any questions in the consent calendar?
Absolutely not. I move for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
A motion, Carrie, I'm sorry, I was talking, motion here, was that a second? Is that a second?
I'll be a second.
Sorry, I should have been quiet, my fault. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Larson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, and I apologize, Carrie, I shouldn't have been talking. Public hearing tonight, we have none. Unfinished business, we have information on ordinance on the fire protection amendment. Warren, are you going to start that one off?
Yes, good evening. So apparently last summer before, you all hired me. You had adopted an emergency ordinance dealing with fire restrictions, given that we'd had a fairly dry summer and we had, the state was declared a stage-two fire restriction area last year. So about a month and a half ago, Cootney County Fire and Rescue approached the city and asked us to look at adopting a permanent ordinance that would regulate burning when we had stage-two restrictions and also some potential restrictions for burning on public property. So that's what you have in front of you in your packet tonight. I'll give you the highlights of what it covers. I also know that we have representatives from the district here, so you can address questions to them as well. So what the draft does, we have, we took the fireworks ordinance, it's on the books now, that also deals with fire prevention. We attached to that burning restrictions in public parks. Essentially, you can't have open burning except in designated areas, which seems to be fairly straightforward. Similarly, in our open space areas where it's essentially you have vegetation that can get dry, it's not irrigated, there's no smoking except in designated areas, trying to prevent anything that's going to catch a spark and lead to a fire. Additionally, we have a permanent prohibition of burning on private property whenever a stage-two restriction is enacted by the state. That doesn't apply to backyard barbecues or fire pits, so long as they keep the area around it free of vegetation or other things that will catch fire, as long as it's monitored by an adult. We don't, the fire district didn't see that as something that they wanted to do. We still want to, a lot of people to have fun in the summer doing the things that they like to do, as long as they're doing it in a safe fashion. A couple of other things to note, there's a new prohibition of fire lanterns that's really more dealing with the fireworks, but I think you probably have seen the little paper lanterns that people put a candle inside, light it, and it floats away. Those things can lead to fires, obviously. It's maybe not the best idea to, especially in a dry summer, to send something up into the air that can land somewhere else and light someone's field on fire. Also, we have a new prohibition on possessing fireworks in, on public spaces. Currently, the ordinance only prohibits using fireworks on public places. The problem that we have with that is somebody brings the fireworks on to some open space area, your parks workers or police officers, they don't have any way to deal with telling them, you know, you really can't have that here unless it's, the possession of it is prohibited. We didn't want to be too heavy-handed, we've made the first violation of that provision an infraction rather than a misdemeanor, so that we're not trying to be heavy-handed. It really just gives your staff the ability to ask them to go put them back in the trunk, take them away, and not have them in the, in the public parks. That's pretty much what we've done here. Happy to answer any questions, and again, we have representatives from the Cootney County Fire and Rescue here as well.
Mr. What?
I've got a couple. One, the possession of fireworks in public places do, you know, how nitpicky can this get if somebody hauls a bunch of legal fireworks out of their car in the middle of a public street and walks up and goes into their apartment? Is that public street considered a public place?
No, it's really the parks, public properties, that's where, and school district property, that also applies on school district property.
And kind of, I don't want to take up too much time, a simple thumbs up, like big problem, how big of an issue has fireworks in public spaces, smoking in public spaces been for starting fires? Is that an issue?
I'm a-
Okay, that's, that's all I needed. And, and the ordinance, as I understood it, is the prohibition during a burn ban is, it doesn't apply to gas barbecues and gas backyard fireplaces, but it does apply to charcoal and I would assume a fire pit with wood with a lid on it, is that true or no?
Come on forward, please.
So the way I read it, and I hope I'm getting this right, is the prohibition contained in this section does not apply to the appropriate use of outdoor gas fire pits or fireplaces, covered gas or charcoal barbecue grills or smokers in that area surrounding the fireplace. So it's, it's gas, barbecues, charcoal, fire pits, so long as you keep the area clean and it's monitored by an adult, that's sort of what we were aiming at.
Gerald Archer, Fire Marshal, Cootney County Fire and Rescue. That's correct. It is meant for approved appliances such as briquet-fired barbecues and smokers and things like that to be allowed under this ordinance.
But a fire pit that uses wood, say even has a screen cover over the top of it or something like that, then no go?
It's a case-by-case, if it's an approved appliance, if you buy something like at one of the box stores, that's metal, has a screen on it, something like that, it would be usable. A three-by-three fire in just an open backyard area would not.
As the ordinance, doesn't seem terribly clear on that, I guess. I guess the reason I'm asking these, because the only exception for the, for the misdemeanor is on possession of fireworks in a public place, but smoking a cigarette in a public place or, or having a backyard fire during a stage-two, if it's not an approved container, a misdemeanor to me on that, it seems like it could be a little bit heavy, but.
And we kicked that around a little bit, and it's, it's a bit of a judgment call. I mean, it's obviously we're going to respond to how the council would like to deal with that. The consequences frankly of, of smoking in a dry area where there's not readily accessible water or other ways to put out a fires can be pretty big. And so it's, it's a fairly serious thing to have those things get out of hand. I mean, you're going to spend tens of thousands, potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars fighting those, and it also want to set the district up so that they can hopefully seek recruitment of some of their expenses from the guilty party. So it's, it is a bit of a judgment call.
And this is just me speaking for myself, but it seems like, so if, I don't know what the stats are, if one out of every, you know, 20,000 cigarettes smoked in a, in a public area starts a fire is probably not that, not that bad, but you can make a lot of criminals without ever a fire. I'm more of the idea of, okay, if somebody smokes a cigarette in a public place and starts a fire, make that a felony and garnish wages anything else, because then damage has actually been done. But making somebody a criminal because they lit up in the wrong place or brought their family out back in an unapproved, you know, fire pit type thing, turn them into a, into a criminal, that seems a little bit, to me, a little, a little heavy, but that's just my opinion.
It's, it's not our intent as the fire district to administer this heavy-handed as well. What we were looking for is if we had an incident of fire in a vegetated park that was caused by a cigarette, we could prove that it was caused by a cigarette. We wanted that, that to be, that person had to have done something wrong, basically. If they start, then we can go after cost recovery and recouping and so forth and so on. If it's just started by, if it's just negligent discarding, discarding of a cigarette that's allowed to be smoked in that area, then there's really nothing we can do.
I have one quick, and this isn't necessary for Gerald, but so, who's enforcing this?
The fire district would enforce most of it, as far as the backyard burns and stuff like that, because we would get the 911 call.
Okay, the person at the park that has fireworks or lights up a cigarette, who's, who's enforcing that?
I don't see anybody being park police walking through, telling people to put out cigarettes, telling people, it's that if that person causes an issue with smoking or causes an issue with the fireworks, then we can take action.
I guess my only, and I understand that, you know, with Chief Hogan, I'm sure you guys too, that nobody wants to get anybody in trouble, it's not your first. I just get where it's actually written, if you do this, then it's a, it's a misdemeanor. I don't know if there's a different way to, to award that, to allow legally some flexibility or, I mean, obviously they have the legal flexibility to charge or not to charge, but.
Certainly, so the options cities have typically are infractions or misdemeanors, those are the two things that we can do to enforce our ordinances. You're absolutely correct that there is discretion, and I think our police department, our public employees do a pretty good job of exercising that discretion appropriately. There's times when you want to tell people, you know, just put it away, take it out of the park, and there's other times, it might be, here's the citation. So we can, those are the two options we have to look at. The existing prohibitions for the fireworks, all of those were considered misdemeanors under existing city code. And so we can look at all of it again, if there's certain items that you think that you would like to see infractions for a first offense or something, I'm happy to consider whatever you want us to put in there and, and come back to you.
So if, if you decide that, I don't know if it's a question for you or Chief Hogan, but there's somebody, say, a backyard fire in a non-approved device, and you feel like it's egregious enough that probably they need something, then do you have a choice of a misdemeanor or nothing under this ordinance, or, or can you step that down to an infraction?
The way the ordinance is written right now, if we were to charge, we would have to charge it as a misdemeanor. But as with any ordinance, when the officer responds, they're going to weigh the severity of what's going on, and they're going to try to do education first, you know, work through this. Typically, you would never see a citation issued unless this was a long-term, you know, type problem where we'd been out there multiple times.
And you guys, at least, I'm not worried about you guys. It's just the, the way things are written, it almost seems like more options for you might be better, but.
Yeah, if you look through our city ordinances, there's a lot of them that are misdemeanors that, you know, we're just not going to charge someone, we're going to go out there and do education and try and resolve that first, and enforcement is a worst-case scenario for us. So personally, on this ordinance, I, I think it's, you know, find the way it is, I think it'll allow the officers for those people that want to be obstinate and not follow the rules after the second or third time, it'll allow us to, to charge if needed. But I just don't see officers going out there and writing a bunch of tickets and making criminals.
Especially your crew too, I don't, I don't see that, I'm just, I'm being more nitpicky about the wording than anything else.
Sure. Then, no comment?
Yeah, I, I have a question about backyard fire pits, because I would say probably of the homes I see in the 90 percentile have those, and they're not approved devices, they're made out of bricks and they burn wood in. I mean, nearly every place that is around here has those. So you're saying the people can no longer use those?
No.
Not under a stage-two.
Okay, so the stage-two is what we had when we had the special meeting last summer.
Correct.
They're really, so during normal summertime, they can still use their fire pits?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, I'm good with that.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Any other questions, comments? That will come back at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay? Good questions, thank you very much. You all right with answers?
I'm good.
Next item up is citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the council? Seeing none. Next is new business, public art proposal.
Kristin is going to come up and address the council.
Move that over really quick, there we go. Hello, and thank you so much for allowing me to come and present this project to you. My name is Kristin, I am the Director of Programming at the Jaclyn Arts and Cultural Center, and I want to come before you tonight to present a public art project in conjunction with the City of Post Falls and the Jaclyn Arts and Cultural Center. This initially would be a grant-supported project written by the Jack and then theoretically and hopefully maintained by the city. This grant is through the Idaho Commission on the Arts. And of course, and since this is a grant-supported project, if the funding would not come through, which we would find out by July of this year, then the major question then would be, would the city want to keep going with this project, find other avenues of funding, see this project through, there's always funding out there, you just really have to find it. I do have a small PowerPoint project or presentation, I know everyone's in a hurry, so I want to get you out of here pretty fast.
You're fine.
This works. Hello? There we go. Oh, okay, well, if it's not working, we'll just, we'll just muddle through it. So the introduction to this is an objective, which is of course to establish and create and launch with the City of Post Falls and the Jaclyn Arts and Cultural Center a public art project here in the Post Falls area. Grant-supported and matched fund by service groups and donations from the community. The involvement so far, of course, here you are, the involvement so far, of course, is the Jack, hopefully the City of Post Falls, the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce. I have also spoke to the Coeur d'Alene Art and Culture Alliance, who is totally on board. We're waiting for board approval with the Post Falls Historical Society. So we've got some pretty good support so far already. The outcome, of course, enjoyment by the community, exposure, oh, we can move on. There we go. So the outcome would be enjoyment by the community, exposure for all involved parties, citywide support of the arts and arts-related events within the community, a catalyst for a public art project here in Post Falls, raise awareness for public art and exposure for art and artists in the community. An overview of what we've got right now is, my main objective was to really catalyst a partnership with the City of Post Falls and the Jaclyn Art and Culture Center to find a nice, fun project for us to all do. So that was kind of where that came from. So help awareness to fund future projects, partner with area service groups and build awareness, partner with area nonprofits, profits for guidance, and that of course would be the Historical Society and the Coeur d'Alene Art and Culture Alliance. Oh. Oh, it takes a minute, I see. So moving on, I do, and I wish I could get this to work totally, oh, here we go. So the tasks at hand, of course, would be selecting sites, publish a theme, which so far we've kind of talked about water, but that's always up for determination later, send out submission for artists, gather a selection committee, which I'm hoping for a lot of community involvement with that. Select two to three artists, depending on the amount of money that is granted, give deadlines and budgets to artists, select dates for art installation, and then of course reveal the work to the public. The grant cycle for this particular grant this year is July, 2016 through July of 2017. So that'll give us a timeline to go from there on. A rough budget, of course, so $10,000 in grant support is what's been asked for, supplies, installation, and marketing included, and then the matching funds from local service groups and community donations would have to be on a one-to-one ratio. So if $10,000 is donated through the grant, $10,000 would have to be donated from the community and matched. So that's kind of how that works. And then put together a small little schedule, you know, call for artists could take up to a month, selection of artists could take up to two to three months, and then give the artists a good chance to put together their art. With possible unveiling, you know, June or July of, actually, that should say 2017, sorry. And then go from there. So a couple spots that have been suggested, so we've got City Hall Plaza here, and then Falls Park. This is just looking north on Spokane Street, but looking into the medians, of course. And then one of the roundabouts, and this one is particularly at Poline and Spokane, looking south, actually. So then, of course, the next step from there would be to find out how we want to address the preservation and maintenance of the public art once it's installed and the grant is done. Again, the Jack would be responsible for grant maintenance, so that would be the final report in any kind of management that would need to be done through the cycle. And then a possible next phase would be future projects. So in closing, you know, the major ask tonight is to get the city's support on this project and then move forward with a public art project for many generations to enjoy. And so I want to thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope we get the chance to work together. Any questions?
Thank you, Kristin.
You're welcome.
It seems to me that the only, there's no dollar required on the city's part upfront is the way I interpret this, if you're going out to the community or the community service groups and private donations.
Correct.
So where it would impact the city would be as far as, would be a cost of maintaining or preserving-
Just staff time involved with the project itself, and then maintenance and ownership of the projects once they're donated to the city. The other thing I wanted to mention, she may have said it somewhere in there, but the plan is to use local artists for this.
At least Idaho, Idaho artists, I think we should open it to at least the entire state, and very adamant about that as well, I am, at least.
Carrie, go ahead.
Carrie.
I think, and it's in-kind, so you could take the, whatever staff time, such as we did with the fish.
Correct.
So there was some in-kind from the city as opposed to-
Correct.
-apotho money that we were-
Correct.
-drawing from, that could be part of that $10,000-
Matching, correct.
Matching fund.
Yeah, definitely.
And I, I'm absolutely in support of it, and in full disclosure, I wrote a letter in support of the grant.
Which I thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, I think on a very small investment of time by staff here at the city, the benefits of having public art, and not just because I really want you to put it in the roundabout at Poline and Spokane Street, where I can enjoy it every day.
Or Poline in Idaho is just as beautiful, too.
Yeah, but she wouldn't see it as much. Yeah, but she wouldn't see it as beautiful.
I don't, yeah, that's not how my radar's viewed it, but.
Oh, that's right, she wouldn't.
I think it's, I think it's the perfect way where you have all of those partnerships with those organizations. With the city, we have space to maintain it, and I think if we use the fish as an example of how this works very well, and using local artists, not necessarily within the city limits of Post Falls, but local within this area, is another selling point for me.
Right.
Thanks, Carrie.
I think the development too with the city and the local service groups and the community, you know, even getting the Boys and Girls Club involved and, you know, the younger generations, the school district, this could be a really awesome project. And whereas I use Coeur d'Alene as a model and a little bit of a, you know, guideline on this, it has had its controversy, of course, and so what I think would really help the citizens of Post Falls to jump on board with this and be really supportive with it would be the community involvement, and making sure that they're involved in it.
Joe?
Is this something that would come before the, the council, before it was implemented?
Yes, and we have an arts policy that addresses how this will be handled.
And as part of that, and first of all, I like the idea, but I'm a stickler too, is that as part of the presentation to the city, because some projects are probably more expensive to maintain, more difficult to maintain than others. So if we can get an estimate of each of the finalists of what it takes to maintain it and how much the cost will be, something with lights on it, obviously it'll take more to maintain than something without.
Or glass, or, yeah, of course.
Then it would be, at least we have a good idea what we're looking at.
And all the projects have to be reviewed by community development and by parks and rec. As for public safety, maintenance, longevity, all of those items that are our arts policy.
Are there typically costs disclosed with that or estimated costs for that? I don't remember if that was part of the policy or not, but.
Probably not that specific, but yes, we would look at that.
No, I'm in support, thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to take any action today?
We need a motion or, I don't see that, if we did, or.
Support of the grant, would they need to make a motion? Yeah, probably should formalize just a motion on the support of the grant.
I'd move to support the Public Art Project Proposal Grant.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Next item up is ordinances, and we have one tonight on the Chase Road and Grange Avenue Annexation.
Move to place the ordinance, Chase Road, Grange Avenue Annexation, file number A-15-04, on its first and only reading by title only, while under suspension, other rules.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately 11 acres located at the southwest quarter of said Section 27, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning said annexed property, a single-family residential R1, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, Chase Road and Grange Annexation Number File A-15-04, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you very much. Administrative staff reports wastewater bond refunding. Jason.
And while he's coming up, Councilor Malloy does actually specifically state that estimated costs will be provided for future, future maintenance.
I'm sorry for flapping my gauze.
Yeah, so it's in there.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor and Councils. Back in May of 2015, the city entered into, entered agreement with Piper Jaffray for financial advising. And after that meeting, I was talking with Eric, because the city currently has two wastewater treatment, wastewater bonds that are outstanding in 2005 and 2009, and he said, we were looking at the rates, because at the time, interest rates were down, but the savings we had in the wastewater bonds would be slight if we were going into a refinancing. So going out for another bond issue to refinance those wasn't, wasn't in the cards. But what I was interested in was, the city had recently done something with the industrial revenue bonds, where we did a direct placement with a bank, and I wanted to know if we could do something like that, because what the criteria is with the, the direct placement is, they look if the amount is under $10 million and if it's under 10 years, which these are. And so we had reviewed with Holly Troxel, Danielle Quaid had reviewed if, if it was possible for a municipality to do, to do that, is to do a direct placement with a bank. She gave the green light, and recently, we went out and we had an RFP for quotes. And I received five very favorable quotes from banks, Wells Fargo, Columbia Bank, Washington Trust, Washington Federal, and Mountain West. And the interest rate on the loans that we currently have, which are good for municipalities because they're, it's a tax, it's, it's tax-free and it's about 4%, and the winning quote for Mountain West was 1.84%. And so, I want to give you a heads-up, next council meeting, I'll be bringing to council for approval, so I wanted to have some kind of informational, brought back to council. And so what does that mean? The wastewater treatment plant, if we do, when we do our direct placement, will, will net a savings of about $250,000. So that will be on the 19th, I believe. Ironically enough, I just got these figures today, and the final was roughly 245, but that's what we had anticipated, and that the final, final figures is 245,000. And so, bond council is writing up, making sure all of the contracts are in order for the 19th.
So the net amount would be two, net savings would be 245?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything about this that would expose us to any additional restrictions or liability that's not?
No, actually, there's fewer restrictions by doing a bank placement such as the reserve requirements, because with the bonds, you have to have, there's so, so much money you have to have set aside, that goes away, and so with, with the bank, we're just dealing with one entity. It's a little easier if we want to restructure our debt, and that was part of also that I wanted to look at was not knowing what we, what we need for future with the DEQ requirements. I didn't want to have a lot of restrictions if we had to have another loan, whether it be a DEQ with another, with another, with a bank placement, or we had to go out for bonds. I didn't want to have tight, tight restrictions. So that, like, good question, there's actually fewer by going with them.
Is there any reason not to do it?
I didn't see any, and neither did the bond council and our financial advisor, who, one thing I like about having the financial advisor is now they work on our behalf. If you go with an underwriter, they're kind of looking to, for you to go with their entity to issue the bonds. Financial advisor will look out for the city of Post Falls. The interesting part that I wanted to say is Piper Jaffray had, had never done anything like this before with a direct placement for sewer bonds, so that was new territory for them. One thing that the, the five banks that presented, and everybody's proposal was very, very close, is they looked at our credit rating, and Post Falls had a very good credit rating, and so, and it shows in their rates, they're very, very competitive.
Any questions? Thank you, good work.
Thank you.
Love being able to save money, especially on the interest.
I say, this is just, you know, a piece, we keep talking about wastewater and the rate increases we've seen over the last several years and what's projected over the next several years, and we just keep looking to see where we can save money to try to keep from increasing those rates any further than we have to, to meet all the DEQ requirements. And so, Jason, again, I mean, doing something that no one else has done, we're doing a direct placement, and so staff looked at that and figured out a way for us to save money.
Thank you very much. Good effort, appreciate it. Next item up is mayor comments, and I have none tonight. How about council comments?
Absolutely none.
We've been threatened with a gavel.
Do we need a executive session tonight?
We don't.
Next motion is?
Attorney.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Attorney adjourned, thank you very much.